8, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Henderson, would you please, in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. For those in attendance tonight, I want to let you know that we do not, we aren't going to simulcast the UVA game, but we do have an incredible attendance here this evening. So I appreciate everybody joining us. For those that would like to speak, there's a sign up sheet in the, in the back during our public comment period, and we would love to hear from you. So please feel free to, to take that opportunity. The first item on, on the agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to pursue, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Item number three are matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with, with Saul this evening? No?
No, I'd just like to thank staff. They've put together a budget and have been educating the, the two new members of council the, the past couple of months in, in budget and the process, and I appreciate what they've done and it's kind of opened my eyes to what's going on around here. And Dr. Castle and his staff for, for working hard to get a budget into us.
Absolutely. I would echo that and, and also just to, just to restate my appreciation to colleagues, we've been meeting for, for months now with retreats and work sessions in preparation of it. So I appreciate everyone's time and energy to that effect. Right. Number four is to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Waynesboro. And I can read the proclamation first. So whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a solution that requires involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, and whereas in 2018, there were 243 investigations of child abuse or neglect in Waynesboro City and 158 children currently in foster care in the Waynesboro-Stanton-Augusta area. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable and engaged in support of community, and whereas all citizens should become informed in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse programs succeed because of partnerships created among the Department of Social Services, the Children's Advocacy Center, the Office on Youth, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And now therefore be proclaimed by the Waynesboro City Council that April 2019 is hereby designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the city of Waynesboro and Waynesboro City Council calls upon all citizens, community organizations, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby prevention, preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we serve. So with that, I'd call Ms. Newman to come forward and certainly offer an opportunity for you to, to share anything.
Yes. Mayor Short and council members, thank you very much for having us here. Blue Ridge Child Abuse Now Coalition is comprised of local youth-serving agencies, including the Shenandoah Valley Department of Social Services, the Blue Ridge Court-appointed Special Advocates, or CASA, Valley Children's Advocacy Center, the Office on Youth and Civic Organizations Committed to the Prevention of Child Abuse. The Blue Ribbon Child Abuse Prevention Campaign had its early beginnings following the death of a very young child. In 1989, a Virginia grandmother named Bonnie Finney received the devastating news that her grandson had died of injuries inflicted by his parents. In an expression of grief and outrage, this grandmother tied a blue ribbon to the antenna of her van as a way to remember the bruised and battered body of her grandson. And to alert her, to, to alert the community to the tragedy of child abuse. Her simple idea to wear or display a blue ribbon has picked up grassroots and carried across the country and formed a national campaign against child abuse. I have members of the Blue Ridge Scan here who are going to give some statistics and other information.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Juan Pablo Berispeita, the CEO of Blue Ridge Court-appointed Special Advocates. And I would like to share with you some local data and statistical highlights. Every five minutes, a child is born in Virginia, and on an average, one child per week is born in our area and has been exposed to substance, to substances, to drugs. 3.7% of area high school students dropped out before graduating in 2018. In 2018, there were 909 investigations of child abuse or neglect in the Waynesboro-Stanton-Augusta area. 174 children are currently in foster care in Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County. Forty-nine of those children are from Waynesboro, which is almost a 70% increase over last year. There are currently 45 approved foster homes trained through DSS. CASA numbers this fiscal year are 81 children with a court-appointed special advocate who are being advocated by 40 active volunteers. The Valley Children's Advocacy Center served 294 children during fiscal year 18. This is nearly a 20% increase over the previous year fiscal year 17, and a 70% increase from fiscal year 14. The Office on Youth provided parenting support programs to 315 parents in 2018.
Good evening. I'm Meredith Keppel with the Office on Youth. Just some other statistics and research, some that were conducted by the Prevent Child Abuse America estimates that implementing effective policies and strategies to prevent child abuse and neglect can save taxpayers $80 billion per year. The cost of not doing this is measured in increased cost to our local government and taxpayers for foster care services, hospitalizations, mental health treatment, and law enforcement, as well as a loss of individual productivity and expenditures related to chronic health problems in the justice system. The CDC also cites several strategies to prevent child abuse. These include early child home visitation, early education with family engagement, improving parenting skills and family relationships, behavioral parent training programs, treatments to lessen the harms of abuse and neglect exposure, and treatment to prevent problem behavior and later involvement in violence. Our agencies associated with Blue Ridge Scan are very dedicated to provide and help prevent services for those, or provide services for those families in need to advocate for those children.
Good evening. I'm Angela Crawford. I'm also with Blue Ridge CASA. In 2008, Prevent Child Abuse America introduced the pinwheel as a new national symbol for child abuse prevention through pinwheels for prevention. By its very nature, the pinwheel represents whimsy and childlike notions. In its essence, it has come to serve as the physical embodiment of great childhoods we want for all of our children. Local pinwheel gardens have been established in front of the Waynesboro, Augusta County, and Stanton Library, the Augusta County Sheriff's Office, the Valley Children's Advocacy Center, City National Bank in Stanton, and here at the Yancey Building. As a reminder to the community, there is no excuse for child abuse, and protecting children is everyone's job. We thank you for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for all that you do. Number five is a presentation from Dr. Castle on the 2020 budget for the Waynesboro Public Schools. Dr. Castle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayors, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, talk about the budget a bit with you. As you know, and for the information of the audience, I typically present at the last Monday of March by Code of Virginia. I provide a budget to the city council. That falls during spring break, but for that and other reasons, the council meeting changed from that night, and so I'm here this evening to present the budget. I find that to be a little added stress because I followed Mr. Hamp, Mr. Shaw, and Mr. McCormick in their fine presentation last week of the city budget. And I'm reminded repeatedly to keep it short tonight. There is a basketball game later. It is a little different presentation because you've had the, the school board budget, which was adopted on March 25th, for a couple of weeks and had an opportunity to view that. So I'm going to talk about some themes and highlights tonight, maybe not highlights, themes and main points. There are no highlights in this budget, in my opinion. School board started the year with three, three budget priorities. These were developed really early in the, in the school year. We start talking about the budget in September when we see our enrollment. By October, we're talking with our principals and, and budget managers, directors in the central office about our budget needs for that year. And by November, we're gathering actual dollar amounts and funding requests from buildings and directors. December, we receive typically the city audit, and that informs us as to what the funding formula yields in terms of a local funding dollar from which to budget. The governor's budget comes out around the 18th, 15th through 18th of December. And so by January, we're well into budget. Our budget priorities have been teacher compensation, teacher compensation. That's a topic for all of the state of Virginia, and you'll hear more about that later in the presentation. Somewhat nationally, very much state of Virginia, and very, very much, I would tell you, for the city of Waynesboro. We not only need to retain the outstanding teachers that we have, we need to recruit outstanding teachers as we have teachers retire or otherwise leave the, the school division for other localities or other opportunities. Our second priority was around career and technical education. The Virginia Board of Education has adopted new requirements for graduation, which are referred to as a profile of a graduate. Part of our strategic plan addresses the profile of a Waynesboro graduate, in which we would like when a student, when a young person walked into a business or industry to apply for a job, they would immediately be recognized as a Waynesboro graduate from a brief conversation or interview. It's pretty exciting to being involved with profile of a graduate and the changes that that brings to public education. Profile of a graduate has great emphasis on workforce development, on real life skills that are applicable to entering the workforce, much less emphasis on standardized test scores, and much greater emphasis on mentorships, internships, and opportunities for young people to interact with business, industry, and the community, so that when they leave school, even if it's not their career path, they have a marketable skill that allows them to enter the workforce, earn some income, and possibly then pursue higher education, pursue some career technical training, or otherwise pursue a different interest while still be, having a marketable skill. And finally, support for all students, but particularly with an emphasis for our at-risk students. We are seeing a significant increase in students with specialized needs and pretty significant needs. You just heard from the groups that spoke, which I would tell you do an outstanding job for us, and we work in partnership with those to serve students who are in foster care or victims of abuse, and those are outstanding agencies to work with. You heard about the increased number of students entering foster care and experiencing some type of maltreatment. We're getting additional requirements from the Virginia Legislature, and these are well-founded, in my opinion. Not all of our mandates from Richmond aren't necessarily well thought through, in my opinion, but these are, which is increased requirements for guidance in mental health services and increased services for at-risk students. I'm going to come back to those priorities later. This is a projected revenue budget. You have a document that's about 80 pages thick that provides line by line breakdown of all of these different funds, state, federal, other, and the local funds. What I would point out to you is, if I can figure out where my little red dot is, there's increased revenue of $703,000 in total. Think it's very important to note the line at the bottom. $812,000 of that revenue is designated for an expenditure. By that, I mean, in, in the budget, there is $512,000 from the state for, for the compensation supplement. That's the part of the state funding to support teacher raises. Those teacher raises cost for this year alone about $865,000. That revenues, that revenue is, is indicated here, but it's not discretionary. There's also some grant money here, $200,000 for a technology grant that shows us revenue, but it has to be spent on the expenditure side. The same's true of several federal grants and a couple of USDA nutrition grants. So while we took in additional, actually over $800,000 of new revenue, we had some declining revenues in some areas. So the net result is 703,000, but it's all designated. It's not discretionary revenue to, to spend as we would like. So in a proposed expenditure budget, which has three parts, salaries, benefits, and non-salaries. This one balances at the 703. When we started February 12th, that number was out of balance by $1.2 million. I want to talk about non-salary expenditures just a bit. These are all the things that, that go into non-salary expenditures. It accounts for less than 20% of our budget, but it's several million dollars. We basically have little or no control over many of those. In fact, I heard, if I heard correctly Monday night, that perhaps our water and sewer and stormwater rates will increase this year. We don't control that, but when those increases happen, we have to pay them for utilities, insurance, whatever that might be. We have a little bit of control, we have some control, I shouldn't say a little, over instructional materials and supplies and our technology, and we have reduced both of those categories. The one item that drives our non-salary expenditures more than any other are regional programs, and we have a number of those regional programs. They're valuable to us. We could not, as a small school division, offer the same opportunities as we're able to offer in partnership with other localities at Shenandoah Valley Governor's School, Valley Career and Tech, Shenandoah Valley Regional Special Education Program, our Alternative Education Program, and some others. Those program costs typically increase annually because the fiscal, the localities that serve as fiscal agents give raises or provide additional resources, and those get passed back to us in the form of our membership or tuition that we pay. And so it shows as a non-salary expenditure, but generally, they're truly related to salaries and benefits. One last comment I would make about non-salary. Our non-salary, if you don't account for regional programs, has increased by less than 3%, about 2.8% from FY 11 to FY 19, by about 2.8%. That's hardly a one-year annual inflation rate. And when something does increase, we simply find another place to reduce it. That's, we're not able to do that any longer. We're not able to, to find places to reduce non-salary expenditures. I'll talk just a bit about benefits. The big driver this year for benefits are projected health insurance increase premiums of around 15%, and we have budgeted for a 15% increase in health insurance premiums. Benefits costs of FICA and VRS are directly related to salaries. When we started work in February and salaries were going to increase, then our benefits cost increased. By reducing those salary lines, we were able to reduce the cost of benefits. I want to talk about salaries because teacher compensation, if you'll remember, was one of the three priorities. I wouldn't say those priorities were necessarily ranked in order, but I would tell you teacher compensation is very, very important to the school board and the administration, and you're about to see how important. In the budget that you have for fiscal year 2020, our employees will receive a 3% raise on average. Now, there's a few scales in which everyone doesn't receive a 3%. Our starting salary is the lowest in the region, among 10 school divisions, so we're trying to increase our starting salary so that we can attract teachers who are just entering the field of education or who may have just a few years of experience. So we're giving higher raises at the beginning steps of our pay scale. We compete favorably above 30 years, and so raises there are not as, not as much. But in general, we're giving a 3% raise. The current year, fiscal year 19, we were able to give a 2% raise. That's important because the biennial budget for the state of Virginia provides the state share of a 5% raise for the biennial. So if you give 5% cumulatively in 2019 and 2020, the state provides their share of that. Now, they use what I call Richmond math, and their share ends up to be about 40% of the local increase, and the locality funds about 60%. And that's based on the local composite index, standards of quality positions, and some other formula factors that I'd be happy to explain, but I would get into ballgame time, for sure. Happy to do that another time. What you're about to see is that total salaries for 2020, 2020, for the coming year, are less than the total salaries for the current year. That happens because we were, we chose to eliminate programs and personnel in order to provide salary increases. I think the question you might ask is why would you do that? Some of my colleagues who have read in the newspaper and in news releases from VSB and DOE are calling and saying, why would you cut positions to give raises? I think one of my board members summed it quite well when explaining that to their youngster who was a student. He said, well, we're going to have fewer people doing the job, but we're trying to take better care of them. This is not an easy decision, but it's an important one, enable to be able to attract and retain quality people. This is a slide showing teacher compensation over the last five years. It compares us to our three neighbors. Sometimes folks don't like being compared to their neighbors. Fact is, this is who we compete with. I used to put up 10 school divisions and compare us. I've stopped doing that about two years ago because first, I've got to compete with Augusta County and the city of Stanton for teachers and administrators, then worry about the Rockinghams, Harrisonburgs, Albemarle, Charlottesville's. We're not competing at all with these, with these groups. You can see the raises of 18%, 16.9%, and 9% for Waynesboro over the last five years. That's a large dollar figure. Cumulatively, that would have cost over the last five years, the city over $2 million to do that, and to have provided raises that were comparable to our closest neighbors. If you project that out the next five years and assume just a 3% raise, you're talking about maybe $4 million to give 3% raise each of the next five years. I realize we're talking about next year's budget for 2020, but I think I have a responsibility to say to you, I believe that it's fair to assume these other divisions are going to give the 3%, and in order to just keep up, not maybe catch up or get ahead, but just to keep up, it's going to require additional revenue beyond what we're currently receiving. Again, I will go back to why would you reduce jobs, positions, and programs? It's in order to have a teacher compensation model that competes with our neighbors and that pays our teachers fairly for the market that we're in, in the region, in the state, and nationally. Even assuming that we were able to retain the teachers we had or recruit teachers, I think there's an obligation on behalf of the school system to compensate our employees fairly. And compensating them fairly requires that they have raises most years, and certainly, I believe, this year and for coming years. I've gone back to the budget priorities because in this budget, the school board has been able to satisfy to some extent their budget priority of teacher compensation, although not without difficult decisions. What we've not been able to do is address career and technical education. I'm going to go, what seems like, on a bit of a tangent for a minute, but it's really not. In the construction budget of the high school, there is about $2 million that we were planning to use for temporary housing of students. Renovating an occupied building of almost 1,000 people between students and teachers is quite a difficult undertaking, especially to do that without impacting the educational experience of the students in that building for at least two years. What we were going to be faced with was renting mobile modular units that meet educational requirements and regulations in order to house students outside of the building. Those lease for about $30,000 a year. We would have needed them for a couple of years, needed eight to 10 by the time we found a place to place them. a place to place them, put in all the utilities, water, sewer, electrical. We were estimating that we would have $2 million in those mobile units. When the renovation was complete, in a couple of years, trucks would hit to them and take them away. We've had an opportunity, maybe luck was involved, but we've had an opportunity to purchase the News-Virginian building next door and invest our money in that building. Initially thinking we would have eight classrooms, but then with profile of a graduate, we begin to think, well, if we're going to put eight classrooms there, let's put eight career and tech ed classrooms. So, what you'll find at much less than $2 million is an investment that's going to last us for many years, if not generations, where we have two large laboratory type rooms and six other rooms that can be used for whatever courses we offer. We've had some excitement about that building and our career in tech ed academy in hopes of offering some new programs. We've been in some discussions with, we being myself, the administration, the school board, a couple of local businesses to inquire about the possibility of adding some new programs that we're able to offer at Waynesboro High School that serve the community need, that do not require a great deal of equipment, as some of our programs at Valley Career and Tech do. We're not trying to compete with them. We think they do a nice job. But we saw an opportunity to have a state-of-the-art new facility, offering some new programs. That doesn't come without some cost for instructors and resources, either curriculum or in some cases, some equipment. It's doubtful we'll be able to meet that priority in the current budget. There's no funds for that. Tough to add resources when you're cutting jobs. And finally, support for all students with an emphasis on at-risk students. It would have been tough to have asked for a better segue than the recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month and hearing about our students who are victims of abuse and who enter foster care often. I've inserted the slide that I couldn't figure out where to put it, so I finally just put it here. But it talks about our students, our current enrollment, but also our economically disadvantaged students. These are smart students. They come to school. They like to come to school, get two hot meals a day. It's a nice warm place in the winter and cool in the spring and fall, hopefully, if everything operates as it's supposed to anyway. Not all of them are able to enjoy that at home. And they come to learn, and they want to learn. They certainly can learn. Students coming from poverty face many challenges and obstacles that students from more economically advantaged homes don't face, and they require more resources to be successful. You can read this just fine. We have other students, students with disability, English language learners, and homeless students that we would consider to be more at risk than some of our other more fortunate students. This was a February 12th proposed budget. I'll back up and say, there's nothing new in the budget to address this other than what may be required by the state. Frankly, that's not enough to address all of those needs by the state or federal government. We may have to add some positions, a position in order to meet requirements and regulations. That's not how we want to operate. We don't want to add positions because we have to. We want to add positions because we should, because they're needed, because they serve students. This was a February 12th proposed budget. I would tell you this was a need space budget. There wasn't fluff in it or luxuries. It's what I and the administration believed that we needed. And it's out of balance between revenues and expenditures at 1.16 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars. This reflects the city contribution of 127, as did the, and the revenue here is generally the same. Actually, in the latest version, when the General Assembly adjourned and adopted a budget, this 531 reduced a bit from state funds. Excuse me. This is the proposed budget that's balanced. It does increase 703,000, both on the revenue and on the expenditure side. You'll see where the revenue from the state ended up being $330,000 rather than half million. That 330,000, the $19 million from the state, does include half a million dollars to support compensation increases. The reason the total is not a half a million is we're budgeting on an average daily membership of 2,900. The budget for the current year, 2018-2019, is based on 2,985 students. We're experiencing enrollment loss, and with enrollment loss comes a loss of state funds. So, that loss of state funds was offset somewhat by the compensation supplement. I will tell you then that that's where we are with our budget. To this point, I've tried to just present some facts to you and the dollar figures as they are. In past years, sometimes I have provided, most years I've provided statistics and data to support the argument. I don't know that it needs any additional support. Those are our priorities. I think, I hope that those are recognized by the community, by the school division, and by you. Certainly, I believe they're supported by the comprehensive plan that you completed last year and adopted. So, I'll close with, and I believe this to be true, that Waynesboro has great schools. All of our schools are accredited. We have great students. Many come with needs. Some are at risk. We have great teachers, great administrators, and great support staff. I will acknowledge, I think we need to work on our own narrative from our schools. I don't think that some of our schools get the credit for the great job that they do. And I think if you talk with parents and students in general, you will find that they think their students attend good schools and have a good education and have a good postgraduate experience. But great schools, even good schools, are not sustainable when programs and personnel are eliminated and reduced. Every year, we've eliminated some personnel, smaller numbers. This year, I expect that the number of positions to be reduced will be around 15. That's probably two instructional aides and probably 15 teachers, maybe 14 teachers, depending on their salaries. When we eliminate those 14 teachers, that will mean that all buildings lose somebody. Some may lose more than others. That means class sizes go up, programs are either eliminated, or in some cases, programs may be reduced. The state offers guidance in the standards of quality and standards of accreditation that there are programs which are required to be offered, but they don't define that as being once a week or once every two weeks or once a month or length of time. So, that's how we will be able to reduce programs and personnel. I'll go back to saying, good schools are not sustainable in programs or eliminated and reduced. Good schools maintain their programs and personnel. I think great schools add programs and personnel to meet the needs of their students and their community. We're not at a point where we can add personnel in this budget. I'm very disappointed to tell you, we're not able to maintain our programs and personnel based on the current level of funding. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer questions or hear comments if you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Castle?
I don't have any questions, but Dr. Castle, I'd like to thank you and the school board. I was going through your budget, and you guys made some real tough calls this time. You stepped up and made the tough calls, and we hope in the future, we can work a little more and try to get things figured out with our budget.
One question.
Yes, sir.
So, the 30, the current enrollment is 30-40, and you're basing your 2020 in personnel and compensation off of enrollment projection of 2,900. So, you're projecting for the, I think, was it May totals for your ADM? That you're predicting that to be a drop of 140 students?
No, that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I'll go back to this slide, which I believe you're referencing, where I show current enrollment of 3,040 students. You'll see K-12, I've listed at 2,888, 2,888. That's actually the March enrollment. Now, that varies daily, kids come and go a little bit. But our kindergarten 12 is 2,888. We have some optimism to 2,900 in August, but you just, you don't know. What the state does not do in the, what we would refer to as the entitlement sheet, but the basic aid and the sheets that you have in your budget that show state funding, they do not provide funding for four-year-olds, with the exception of they provide a set number of, they refer to them as slots, which I find to be a little bit offensive to refer to student slots, but the seats. So, we're funded for 70 student seats by the state. Our Head Start program funds an additional 36 after that. And then our pre-K three-year-olds, one of those is a Head Start-funded classroom for Waynesboro students, and the other is a joint venture between both Head Start, Special Education, and some local dollars in that, serving students with really special needs at age three to get them on track to start. So, the short answer to your question, the 2,900 represents kindergarten through 12th grade, our current enrollment being 2,888. The others are students that are funded through a different funding stream, basically.
Now, I'll just sort of add as more of a commentary, I think, you know, sort of moving forward with, I think, if I'm using my fuzzy math correctly, I think in this current budget, we're looking at the ultimate debt service for the high school project and related expenditures at around seven, eight cents in total in terms of debt service. And I would just encourage, I'm going to take advantage of the fact that we've got a pretty full room tonight to sort of, if I can, respectfully lobby folks to understand that not a penny for capital investments come from Richmond, not a penny. Literally billions of dollars have been allocated to state universities and state colleges in just the past six years, and not a penny for K through 12. And so, when you're, we've got a couple of General Assembly seats coming up here in November, I would encourage everyone to talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors. And if someone comes with a lazy answer about what they're going to do in Richmond when it comes to K through 12 capital investments, you need to find another candidate. Because it is, it should, everyone in Virginia should be outraged at the extent of how communities like ours and Stanton and others, 22,000 people with massive amounts of debt for large capital expenditures and not a penny of support from Richmond. Don't give me a better loan program. Don't give you all a better loan program. Fund it. So, all right, I'll get off my high horse.
If I might add to that, since you started the conversation. School facility needs throughout the state are not unlike those in the city of Waynesboro in many localities, and it is a major revenue lift for rural and small communities to invest the millions necessary to operate current state-of-the-art, I would say even adequate, school facilities. All you have to do is drive through campus of higher education, maybe on the interstate that goes through the middle of one even, and all you see are new buildings and buildings going up there. So, I would concur with you that some state funding, historically, there has been state contribution to facilities in some years prior to the Great Recession, from which the state has apparently never recovered, there were significant funds for facility renovation and construction.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, I got my Serenity Now statement here. Six A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of 20,000 to the general fund to fund a cost allocation plan for the city. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think you're aware that the general fund, that is the tax-supported portion of the city's budget, provides various overhead and administrative services to the enterprise funds that are the proprietary funds of sewer, water, refuse collection, and stormwater management, and as well, the urban street maintenance fund. And these services include things like making payroll, helping with purchasing, accounts payable, other financial services, human resources, IT services, legal services, and general administrative services. These funds, these services are paid for from the enterprise funds back to the general fund through an overhead cost allocation. Periodically, it's important that we evaluate that cost allocation for accuracy, consistency, and to ensure that they're justifiable. So, the ordinance before you would be to appropriate money, to have a external auditor go through several years of the general fund fiscal years to determine the current and accurate cost allocation.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions related to the ordinance? Is there a motion to introduce?
Oh, introduce.
Great, thank you, Mr. Allen. So, this and all other ordinances will be brought forward at our April 22 regular scheduled meeting. Item six B is to consider appropriating a Virginia Tourism Corporation grant in the amount of $13,738 to the general fund to reimburse for advertising expenditures in the tourism department. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. So, in the summer of 2018, our Economic Development Tourism Division applied for and was successful in receiving a grant of $50,000 to reformat and reproduce digital advertising, marketing, several websites, and, well, primarily those program components. This is a reimbursement grant, so periodically along the way, the city will submit expenses to the state, and the state will furnish reimbursement for qualifying expenses. And so, this ordinance simply appropriates the second installment against that grant.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item six C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $8,386 to the general fund to increase the funding available for facade grants. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as part of our enterprise-owned incentive program, the city of Waynesboro offers a facade improvement grant and a sidewalk and landscaping improvement grant. These grants are intended to encourage and assist property owners to improve aesthetics and accessibility of their properties, to create an appealing and a harmonious urban image that enhances the overall vitality and character of the city. The program is administered and funded through the city's Economic Development Department and the Economic Development Authority. Any property owner or tenant with permission of the property owner may apply for a grant to improve their building facade or the property's landscaping. The grant applications must include detailed descriptions and drawings of the work to be completed and cost estimates for qualifying work. In many cases, design assistance is also provided through the grant program. To ensure standard of quality, applications are reviewed by a design committee organized through the Economic Development Authority, and grants are ultimately awarded by the EDA. Successful applicants are reimbursed 50% of the cost of qualifying and completed work, up to $5,000 for the facade improvement grants, and up to $4,000 for landscape and sidewalk improvement grants. The program budget for the current fiscal year is $10,000. We have four businesses, three of which are new to the downtown areas, that have either been paid or are eligible for grants. The total cost of all of the qualifying applicants for the city would be about $18,386, which leverages about $70,000 of private investments in the downtown area. So, we're requesting that the council appropriate the additional $8,386 to make these folks whole.
Great. Is there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
Still moved.
Thank you. Item six D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating additional funding for VDOT's street maintenance. for VDOT street maintenance in the amount of $111,569 to the general fund to increase the funding available for paving. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're well aware that the Virginia Department of Transportation provides the city urban maintenance funds to assist with the maintenance of city streets. Every year, we estimate, based on lane miles, the allocation that we'll receive from the Commonwealth. This year, we had underestimated, or we will receive an additional $111,569.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
So, is this then a pass-through, funds coming through and just being allocated to that?
That's correct. It would be just an addition to that urban maintenance program.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item six E is an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $20,000 to transfer to the equipment fund to purchase a used replacement truck for Parks and Recreation. Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, for starters, this is a 1997 pickup truck Ford model with 197, nearly 198,000 miles. I think our preference would ordinarily be to accomplish this replacement within the context of our budget process, which will conclude in the next several months. However, this particular truck is used to remove trash throughout the city from various parks. And in fact, the interim measure is to use a van on loan from the Office on Youth to pull the cart on which we carry trailers. So, giving pause and thinking about the ability to keep this particular vehicle in service, however, there are engine and functional, other functional areas that really, the cost of repair and restoration to service make it an unwise decision to do so. In our view, the Parks and Recreation Department believes they can meet this need by purchasing a used vehicle, so we bring it based on sort of the solution that we have in mind and the urgency.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Item six F is to consider an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $45,000 to the general fund to fund a compensation study for the city of Waynesboro. Mr. Hamp.
Continuing a theme from this evening, compensation of city employees, much like the school situation, is a theme for the budget which the council is presently considering. We've informed council along the way that it's the staff's belief that identifying a solution and evaluating the city's current classification and pay system is best accomplished with the assistance of a vendor from the private sector. Staff have undergone procurement for these services. We received seven proposing respondents. Staff interviewed four of those agencies and have identified a preferred vendor. This ordinance appropriates $45,000, which would fund the study, and that work would be accomplished in sufficient time to inform our work on a budget, on the budget development for fiscal year '21, which will begin in the fall of this year.
Sir, are there any questions?
I just, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I had a meeting this morning with the city manager and the assistant city manager and HR director, and asked, I mean, we understand that we're on the bottom of the pay scale for our city employees, as we are with our school teachers. And we've, in our retreats, have addressed that as one of our top goals, is to work on compensation for our employees, along with the school teachers. And they tried to explain to me how this study is going to tell us to a more detailed way of saying that we are underpaying our employees. I understand that I don't need that, and I understand that they tried to explain to me how we're going to look at the compensation for different people in different departments. In explaining it to me, some of the things don't sound like we can do apples-to-apples when we look at other municipalities because of the number of employees that they have there. You know, we might have two engineers, another city has four engineers, so you say, well, the engineers, you know, why are they different pay? Or why are, you know, the policemen different pay? And I also question, by the time we get the study done, we start to work on implementing any raises and finding ways and fundings to make the things correct. And we know this is not going to be a one-budget fix. This will be several budgets down each year, hopefully, as Dr. Castle said, we're not just going to try to keep up with them, we want to catch up and keep up. And by the time that we take this study and it actually starts to be implemented in, is it going to be old and not of use, and we will have to spend another $40,000 to try to update it? I just, I'd rather spend the $45,000 in putting it out towards salaries now than to do the study, which I don't think I'm going to come away with any different opinion than I have
I had a meeting with the manager and deputy manager today also, and my understanding was the study is going to help us understand the compression in our departments, because we've got new people coming in, making the same money as people that are 10 or 15 years apart, and this study is going to help us spread out the compression rate and have an understanding how the city can better serve the employees, the teachers, and pay, you know, separate that compression, what departments or what areas need more money to, you know, make it so that somebody that's been in staff longer and addressed the pay that way. And without the study, I don't know that we can get that far. Did I misunderstand that?
You did not misunderstand.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I mean, we know that we have an employee that's been here for three years, and we want to upgrade the starting salary for a new employee, so we can try to get new people to come to work for us. We've got to raise the lower pay up. And when we raise the lower pay up, then they're going to be starting at what the three- and five-year employees are making. I don't need a study to tell me that. I understand that. And then, when we raise the new employees up, then the middle people are going, well, you know, I'm getting screwed here. I've been here for five years, and they're coming in the door making what I'm making now. So, the only option is, we got to raise the pay up for the five-year employees. I mean, that's...
Well, I guess, I guess my thing is, if it's that simple, why haven't we been doing it all along?
Well, we've been discussing it all along for my 10 years here. And, I mean, I finally got it, I understand it, and it's pretty simple if you just go on a 1 to 10 level of pay. You know, if we're paying $1,000 to $10,000, and we start raising the beginning salaries, we have to raise the medium salaries. And then, when we raise the medium salaries, the 10-year people are going, well, this guy's been here five years, now he's making what I'm making. So, we raised the 10-year people, and it's just to make it fair to everybody, and the only fix is money. And that's the bottom line, and so, we're taking $45,000 to spend to tell us we need more money. I already understand that. I just, I just don't, I don't get it. I know where we're at, I know what our problem is, I know we need more money, and when you go out into the community and you talk to the business and to the people, and I was at an auto body repair shop today, and they were talking to me about the increases in their personal property tax, and they said that the insurance companies have not given them an increase on repair of vehicles for the last five years. They're still paying them today what they were paying them five years ago. But we're going to expect to take more money from them. I mean, it's the only way we've got to get it. We, I mean, we hope that some development comes in and always helps us out, and it has helped carried us when we started losing the machine and tool tax. But the bottom line is, we're just going to have to walk to, everybody that's a property owner in this town, people that work in this town, we're going to have to take more money out of your pocket to turn right back around, to put it in here, to try to catch up. And every time it seems like we're catching up, the state or the federal government comes along and goes, well, we're going to cut less, we're going to give you more mandates, but we're not going to fund it. So, y'all got to go back out to your public and take more money every time. And, you know, we've raised the taxes in the last two years 10 cents. We're looking at a five-cent increase this year, along with increasing your water and sewer, increasing your stormwater. I mean, it's, where does it end? Ms. Anderson said it at our last, one of our budget sessions, you know, where does it end? And the people in the community, you know, asked me the same question, where does it end at? I mean, and, you know, the school teachers, everything's going up for them, you know, the cable bills go up, the insurance going to cars, your real estate taxes, and they need to raise like everybody else, that, you know, our city employees, the people that work in the stores, so. And it's, you know, I wouldn't want anybody to sit out in the audience and think, we haven't been looking at this, we haven't been thinking about it, we haven't been studying it. Bottom line, it boils down to me, it's just plain and simple, it's money. And the only way that I know to get it is to go out and take it out of everybody's pocket that lives in this city, to come back and spend it back. I'll get off my high.
Question, did we take full advantage of the 2008 study? Like, did we see, did we reap full benefits from that study?
We did not. We didn't even approach the full benefit, and I would say for two very good reasons. One, primarily, a recession set in almost immediately upon the delivery of that study. And secondly, the sort of, what, the consultant at the time presented about six to eight different options about how to approach a very expensive problem at that time. The council elected to take a phased approach, in which, in year one, they dealt with employees who were below what was the newly established entry position for minimum pay for their position, and made some very minor and limited adjustments for compression. And then, nearly immediately, the recession set in, and we just simply, as a community, couldn't come to terms with the expense of any subsequent implementation of that study. And so, that's part of the challenge and frustration that you inherit as a council and that remaining employees bear today, is that there was a commitment, oh, I wouldn't say a commitment, there was an opportunity and a solution provided more than a decade ago that was never fully realized. It's why, in some cases, if you ask me off the cuff what the gap is in the market, I would tell you it's nearly 20%. And you might gasp at that and say, well, how on earth do you get to a 20% gap? Well, about half of that is because of the failed realization, a gap that was identified nearly a decade ago and never dealt with, and then the remaining 10% is sort of what you see, an accumulated effect over time as we lose position in our labor market. So, it's pretty significant, and part of, is the significance is attributable to the fact that we didn't fully implement, with some very good reasons as to why we didn't.
As to your comments, Mr. Allen, my thought would be, I don't know how to do that, how to increase those things in a fair way. And that's where we need to have someone who does and can look at the numbers and give us some wise advice on how do we spend that money? Because we, as we've talked this evening, we're not going to be able to do that in one year, not going to be able to do that in two years. You know, what is the approach? Do we just throw money at the problem and hope that we catch up? Or is there a way to utilize those that know more than we do to look at a salary structure, to look at the compression that we're talking about, and come up with some wise ways to use the money that we expect we will need to come up with, but in using it in a way rather than just, you know, throw a 3% and say, oh, we hope that works? You know, I don't know if the, what the other estimates came in at, I assume that there were other estimates, and that this was the one that was felt to be best by the city staff, and so, I would trust them to say this is what we're going to need to make these decisions.
Some of the estimates were double what the $45,000 is. But I've been on this merry-go-round for going on 11 years, and we keep hearing the same information, you know, we need money for this, we need money for that, we do a study, we try to implement a plan, and it seems like, you know, you go back when I first got on council, and the, our budget was 36 million, probably 2,008. Now, we're looking at a 51, $52 million budget. So, it's not like we're just riding along at 36 million and we haven't done anything. We've increased, you know, over 50% of what our budget is. We have more revenues coming in, but every time we turn around, you know, we get the money from the, buying from the jail from Rockbridge County, Rockingham County, and we're setting the money aside, and we're thinking, well, we're going to use this money, we set it over for our industrial park, so that when the time comes, we won't have to go back to everybody, say, we need more money to start on our industrial park. But now, we're going to take that money that we've been setting back, the payments we've been receiving, which is, will go back because the cost of the jails going up to run a jail. Any money, extra money we find, and we think at the end of the year, you know, we're in good shape, well, then comes, well, the cost for social services is going up. It's, once again, if we're just going in a vicious circle of we're getting more money, we've got more money coming in, we're trying to collect more money, and then, at the end of the day, there's more money going out for everything that we don't expect to happen. And it's, you know, I don't, I agree with you, but I don't agree with you when you tell me, well, it's compression, and we got to have somebody that knows better how to fix that. It's pretty simple math. It's not, it's not brain surgery for me. I mean, I know there's people that can explain it better than I can explain it, and can tell you, well, this is what you have to do, and I think with all the teachers here, you're going to understand, if we start the starting teachers more, then we got to pay the ones that's been there three and five years more, and then it just goes up the ladder till you get to the top. And it's all about money.
Well, I'll just add a couple, two cents on it, and I recall in September of last year, I was on our job board, and we had a lot of positions available in the city, and nearly 70% of those positions, the starting salary was at or below the poverty line for a family of four in Virginia, at or below the poverty line. And so, as a value statement, I brought to my colleagues and everyone here about, can we have a conversation about, do we want to be known for that? And can we, could we, should we do better? And so, with that, we scheduled a conversation relative to specifically salaries on October the 19th, I only remember because my picture says October the 19th. And we had a very comprehensive discussion, I think from Ms. Nicholson, related to salary ranges, where we were the lowest paid in terms of firefighters, teachers, police officers, garbage collectors, on and on and on. And that it required some strategy, I think, similar into the ways that councils before us in 2008 thought there was value in going and seeking private consultancy to facilitate an answer and a strategy. Some of the non-base salary compensation and benefits that were discussed at that October meeting included sign-on bonuses, well, scale, it's not going to be for every job, so which ones make, does that make sense for? Recognition programs, what's the sort of investment that's required in order to facilitate that? Tuition reimbursements and loan payback program, not that we would do that, but they're, it's an emerging sort of trend, as I recall, in employment. So, for, just from what I recall, and just kind of reading up on stuff in the last several months, and, you know, Virginia in 2018, for the fifth year in a row, had more outbound employment migration than inbound planned employment migration. So, we're losing population, not in gaining population. And that speaks too for rural areas and rural cities like ours that have a difficult time attracting a labor market that is more youthful perhaps. People like to be, you know, I'm coming originally from Chicago, I don't know why people love traffic so much, but they love traffic. We talked about benefits for regular part-time employees as a strategy. What's the sort of cost of that? What's the scale and strategies for that? Flexible scheduling, and then employee celebrations. And that was just a couple of bullet points from that PowerPoint presentation. And I only offer that as I don't think necessarily going to figure it all out tonight. I think all of it tonight, we're just trying to introduce an ordinance, and we can, I would ask, I think it'd be prudent to maybe get to ask Ms. Nicholson to provide some additional information about the process. I remember in October, and I could be wrong, but I remember in October, when pressed with, does council want to go out and ask a bunch of consultants to put in some bids, we said, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. And so, I would give pause to now... And so I would give pause to now, just having now gone through that exercise, is this kind of what we always do? You know, I don't want to be in that spot where we say we're going to go do something, well, let's follow through with it. Or if there's not good reason and we think we can do it in-house, I think to Mr. Allen's point, then let's have that conversation. But I would think, Mr. Ham, if you could, if you could perhaps, assuming it's introduced an ordinance tonight, to prepare additional information, provide that to council, and then not include it in the consent agenda, just right up front, and we'll have it as a regular business item on the 22nd.
Yep. I think that would be great. I would like to acknowledge that Ms. Nicholson is present this evening, that staff have worked to support on the project. And I think rather than have her come to the podium and field questions this evening, I think a prepared and approach would be better.
Yeah, and we'll see how it shakes out after that conversation. I think that would be, that'd be great. All right, so with that, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Ms. Anderson. That's a great discussion, everyone, I appreciate it. All right. Number seven is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Ham.
Just a polite reminder that we have a budget work session tomorrow at 9:00 in the morning.
Is that tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
9:00.
9:00 in the morning. All right, good, thank you. Number eight is citizen comment period.
Ms. Rosemary Waggoner.
So Waggoner, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and so this thing works just like a stoplight, green is go, red is stop.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Waggoner, and I live at 787 Brer Road, it's a Waynesboro address, but it's in Augusta County. But I come to you this evening as the president of the Waynesboro Education Association, which has employees from all of our Waynesboro schools. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. And I'm not bringing you a bunch of data tonight, I'll do that at your public hearing. But there's some things that I wanted to, it's probably going to feel like I'm echoing what, that, your previous conversation, some pieces of that. But the Waynesboro community really needs to decide what type of schools it wants to provide for the youth of Waynesboro. 30 years ago, the tax rate was much higher and the city had a larger tax base. We had a lot more industry that was helping support our city in those days. Over the years, the tax rate has been eroded by continual reduction of the tax rate, so there wouldn't be an increase in the amount people had to pay. While I understand that on one side, it has left you with a tax rate that won't support your city any longer. There are many families of our students that cannot make a living wage in Waynesboro. Waynesboro needs to attract businesses with good-paying jobs. In order to do this, you need high-quality schools. This is the first year that Waynesboro teachers are paid the worst of our area. While we get data on teacher salaries, other employee salaries would rank similarly. You can't have high-quality schools if we continue to be the lowest paid in the region. As you learned last week at your budget work session, school employees aren't the only ones in Waynesboro that are paid lower than surrounding areas. Many of your city employees also fit in that category, which you mentioned this evening already. To keep and attract good employees, you can't have the lowest salaries. I urge you to keep this in mind as you work on this year's budget and the budgets in the future. This isn't an issue just for this year. This is an issue for the future of Waynesboro. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ham, anyone else?
I'm sorry, no, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and with that, we have a closed meeting this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into closed meeting in order to consult with legal counsel about actual litigation. Where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating or litigating posture, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A7 and 2.2-3711A8 of the State Code. The subject matter of the meeting and the litigation is Waynesboro Village LLC.
Great, this motion requires a roll call.
Mayor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter.
Aye.
Thank you. Close session.[1040.82]